Those listening in, I apologize for the technical difficulties. Tonight's work session will be in regards to counting the own property within city limits.
Okay. Mary, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you guys.
Great, thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you, Council, thank you for your patience. Just to give some brief history, the property we affectionately refer to as the old mill site, which has been vacant for some time, and I know we've been working, or I should say patiently waiting for that property to be useful. History on that, basically, it was taken in foreclosure by Lynn County several years ago. In that time, there's been some testing because it was a former mill site, and DEQ has been working with the county since they took it to get the site, shall we say, cleaned up in layman's terms. Mary Camerota has been a part of that process, I believe, since day one. Is that true, Mary?
Yes, I've been on this project for a long time.
Yeah, I think we're talking about 12 years, I think is what it is.
A while, yeah.
So, as we've attempted over the past several years to work to get the property back on the tax rolls and used and become a part of our community, we have endeavored as at least, I think all four of you who are here today have sat in on at least one meeting with a member of the county commissioners regarding that property. I think a couple of you have been in, two, three, or four of them. Again, the history would be that the county has put out basically bids, asking for proposals to develop the property. The four bids that were received were refused by the county. And so last week, two councilors, Councilor Trask and Mayor Protem Gerson, attended the Lynn County Commissioners' meeting and had some questions for them. And at that point in time, the commissioners essentially said, well, take it, we'll sign it over to you. I've expressed to you my concerns about the city taking over ownership of that property because of liability. And what I've asked is for Mary to come in, and she can expand on the history and the efforts to clean the property up. She can then tell you where the property is currently at in its cleanup. She can also fill you in on prudent steps that we should take if we were to choose to take ownership of the property from the county. So unless you have any questions for me, what I'd like to do is just kind of turn it over to Mary and just kind of let her run you through the history and the issues involved with the property, and then we can kind of go from there. No questions? Perfect. Well, Mary, would you mind giving us a rundown on your involvement in the project and where the project is now, and then what things can be done to mitigate liability, should someone want to take possession of the property?
Sure. So, this property was foreclosed on by the county, as Ray hit said, and the warehouse had taken over Willamette Industries, and so it was a hostile takeover. But when they did that, they did assume, you know, ownership of the property. But Willamette Industry was working with Desler at that time, which would be, I think in the early 2000s, something like that. And Desler's idea for the site was to make it a recreational, sort of a destination where people could come and do art and have bean cabins, and there'd be trails and take advantage of the beautiful, the San Yum River, and, you know, all that kind of stuff. So it was a great plan, but Desler turned out to be not what he said he was. He really wasn't a developer. So he did not pay his taxes, and that's why the county foreclosed on it. And when you do a foreclosure, basically, the county is protected from environmental liability if they take precautions and don't exasperate the situation. It also allows them access to grant funds if they would apply, or if the state has some to award them. So that's the advantage of having a foreclosed property and having the county, in this case, in the driver's seat. So after a couple attempts, they were able to get funding from EPA, and it's a site-specific assessment grant that they got. And with that money, DEQ was basically acting as the project manager and reran it for Lynn County, basically. And we did a bunch of sampling in the area and figured out what areas needed more work and what areas would be suitable for redevelopment. So we did all that. And then we brought other money in that we had to help out with the development. And at a certain point, we identified some groundwater issues and the potential to go into the neighborhood with the groundwater issues, and that brought actually Warehouse to the table. This whole time, they were saying, no, we don't have any involvement, but when that happened, they came to the table, which was good. You might say, well, why didn't you make them come to the table sooner, DEQ? And it's because we would have to go to court to force the issue. And the county had tried also to force the issue through the various years. That's why it took a long time to get to the point we're in today, because it's not easy and it's expensive to, you know, force an issue. And this state, by the way, is a voluntary cleanup state, which means we allow people to take the time that they need to deal with it. The only exception is if we have an imminent threat. We won't, we have ways of stopping that, but if it's not an imminent threat, we generally let the owner or the responsible party, as we call them, deal with it. So that's why there hasn't been this big, big push to clean it up right away. It is allowed to go at a pace that, in this case, since the county owns it, the county does it. So, basically, the property is, we're just about done with the work, finishing the assessment and knowing what needs to be done. Warehouse is, one area has contamination in the soil that's elevated enough that they're going to remove that soil. It's got dioxin, if you want to know what it is, and they'll put a cap on it, and that will stay. And that's kind of by the main mill. If you had a map, I could show it to you. But anyway, they, and then they did do work in the pond area, and so the sediments in the pond, if they're left alone, are fine. If somebody takes the sediments out, they would have to manage it. The big buildings that you see on the property, they're full of asbestos. And to abate that, just the asbestos part would be like over $500,000. And then, of course, you'd have to take the buildings down on top of that. So it's more than $500,000 to deal with the asbestos in the building. There is some low-level petroleum on the site, so that, if it's dug up and removed, would have to be sampled and then managed appropriately. But low-level petroleum is not as big a concern as the price tag for doing the asbestos removal on the property. We anticipate finishing up the work and issuing what's called conditional no further actions probably later in the summer of 2022, again, waiting for Warehouse to finish their work and give us all the information so that we can go through that process. The county has been having us do, look at sites kind of around the main mill, and so there's some work there. Either we've issued a no further action, so that means, based on the use, that it's safe. A conditional no further action means that we're limiting something, usually the groundwater, or that you have to manage the soil if you dig it. And then other times, when there isn't have been no release, we've concurred with the recommendations of the initial evaluation that said there's not a problem. So we don't issue a further, no further action if there hasn't been a release, but we can concur that the assessment that was done indicated there wasn't a problem. So I'm going to stop there, because I've been talking for a few minutes, to see if you have any questions about the sampling, status of the site, what no further action means, anything like that.
Questions to Council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mary, thanks for coming, I appreciate that. I guess my question would be, how, what is Warehouse's responsibility for the rest of the cleanup? And I'm mainly talking about the asbestos one, which is a huge problem. Is that their responsibility to take care of that, or where does that go?
Well, we have tried to have conversations with Warehouse that DEQ would like them to clean that up. They had approached us and said, well, if you, if we do a few things, will you get, will you take away all our liability? And we said, no, you haven't dealt with the asbestos. And so they've been pretty adamant that they're not going to touch that. Again, you know, DEQ wasn't planning on going to court with them over that. That's, again, it's problematic. So there, even if we NFA'd the rest of the property, they still do have some liability. They're just saying, we'll sue us, DEQ. So it's not, it's not a good position to be in, because we don't intend, as a state, to sue them. So money will have to be found, either a cleanup grant, or, you know, I don't know if a developer would do it, but yes, it leaves where those building, it's a hole, and I haven't, I've tried, but I haven't found a way to pay for that yet. And I don't know if I will, but that is what I'm looking for, because that is basically the outstanding piece that hasn't been addressed. And we will keep pushing Warehouse to do something about it, but so far, they haven't been willing to do that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I still, in my, when I talked to Roger Nyquist, our Commissioner Nyquist, he told me that the property was 99% taken care of, so I'm assuming that that's not true.
Well, what he's referring to, I mean, I wasn't there, but certainly, we understand where the contamination is, and most of it is easy to deal with, like the petroleum, the surface soil petroleum, or maintaining a cap, or not digging the sediments out of the ponds and the drainage ditch. He's not, I'm sure he's not referring to the buildings, because we, you know, we know that that's outstanding, that still has to be done. Now, you know, if the city was to exclude that particular, if, you know, that tax lot, if you weren't to take that on, that stays in the county's hands, there may be enough property for you to begin your, you know, your plans. I know that you have plans for the site, you know, roads being in there and so forth, so, you know, maybe leave that section alone and work with the properties that we know are, either have no further actions or conditional no further actions, and move those parcels forward, but leave that parcel with these buildings alone, because, again, that's 500,000-plus liability out there.
So, if somebody buys the property, they're going to be, somebody's going to have to pay that $500,000 plus whatever the other costs are. So is that just going to be condemned forever?
Sometimes properties sit a long time, and, you know, I do want to approach the county and say, hey, are you interested in pursuing a cleanup grant to deal with that? I don't, again, we don't have monies. They could go for revolving loan fund with Business Oregon to look at that. They just haven't been willing to address it either. Between Warehouse and the county, we don't have, you know, partners here that are willing to step up and look at that. We're going to keep pushing, but yes, it is outstanding, and it could last for many more years until funding is found to deal with it. Sometimes funding is grants, sometimes it's a loan that, you know, when the property's sold, will have to be paid back. That's why you don't want this for a dollar. That's, you know, again, that particular lot, you don't want that, because, again, if you purchase that without having some protection, then the city can be part of the chain of responsibility, and that's not where the city wants to be, obviously.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of information question. In the bids that were presented to Lynn County, this is probably more for Ray, were those potential buyers willing to take care of the abatement of that property?
I am not aware. I don't know if Blair might be remember better than I do.
Not that it matters now, I'm just interested in the information.
From the proposals that I saw, they did not make it clear what they would do.
Okay.
And depending on how they purchased the property, as Mary stated, there is such thing as a, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, it's called a prospective purchaser agreement?
Yes, yes, a prospective purchaser agreement. That's something that DEQ and the potential buyer enter into, it's a consent judgment, basically. And in there is listed what actions need to be taken and by whom, and it's from a release of liability, from a third-party liability, and potential future issues, people like that. And so in there, if they took this parcel, would be, hey, you need to abate the asbestos would be part of that. So the buyer would know what their responsibility is, or if they could engage Warehouse to deal with it, it doesn't matter. We've had PPA, prospective purchaser agreements with the responsible parties and/or the buyer. So it just depends on what they want to negotiate on that.
But the reason I brought it up is that essentially, any, anyone who's doing their due diligence would want to seek such an agreement before purchasing the property, including the city.
Yeah, the city, if the city was to, yeah, you don't want it ever quick-dated to you. Again, if asbestos was abated, I would say, hey, you know, this is what's out there. You know, do you want, do you want a PPA, or do you want, you know, some other mechanism that's out there to cover your liability? But it is that outstanding issue on the asbestos on that one parcel that's problematic.
Mr. Mayor, in my opinion, from the day one, I thought that that was Warehouse's responsibility to begin with, and I just don't know how to get around that. It seems like, it would be hard for me as a buyer to want to have a $500,000 over my head to buy it, because it's going to have to be done at some point, I'm sure.
The perception I've had for all these years is Warehouse is Goliath, and everybody else is a little pea on, and nobody wants to take Goliath on, and I can understand that to a certain extent. Plus the fact Warehouse is one of the largest employers in the state, and that's another reason why they're afraid to take them on. But I would think someday, something has to move. We can't sit on property forever, and that's kind of why we're asked a lot of questions today.
Yeah, and Warehouse, you know, when you talk to their lawyers, they're saying, hey, we never operated it, so why are you thinking we're responsible? And it's like, well, because you took over Willamette Industries, and you took over their assets or their lack of, and so, yes, it is you. They know it, but they don't have the, you know, again, they're not willing, and the state is not willing to, at this stage, go to court with them to force it. I don't know when it's going to move, and I'm sorry, because it really does affect your town, it affects your property values. I get all that, but I don't have a mechanism right now to make them do what is their responsibility. But we will not release them from any liability until they deal with that asbestos. If they approach us, which they did once, and we said, nope, not until you deal with that, and they said, fine, we're taking our offer off the table.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing. So if we, hypothetically, if we took the property, can we still be using the same process with you and everybody else, the EPA and the DEQ? Can we still be using you as a person, people who would help us get beyond that asbestos thing with Warehouse as best you can? I know they're not going to want to do it, but is that something that would be possible, rather than the county taking care of that? Or you understand what I'm asking there? I don't know.
Yeah, so the county, because of liability laws, they're shielded, whereas the city's not. And so that's why I recommend that it stays, at least where the buildings are, stays in county hands until it's dealt with, because if the city takes it, you don't have the same access to the monies that, the grant monies that could come. It just has to do with foreclosure laws. I'm going to put you in a bind, sorry about that.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, Councilor Sanchez has her hand raised online, if you could recognize her.
Councilor Sanchez, go ahead.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Sanchez.
Okay, I heard a little bit about why we don't want to take on Warehouse legally, but if the county doesn't have any responsibility for the property because they're shielded, and the city does have some sort of liability for the property because we aren't shielded, and Warehouse knows that they have some liabilities, and they're requesting to have those released, why would we not move? Nobody really wants to move because nobody's really affected but us.
Was there a question? I wasn't quite sure, Councilor.
I don't under-
Mary, can you hear me?
I can, but you guys, it's just a big mess of interference. There we go. You guys still there?
Yeah, we can hear you. Sorry about that.
It was probably the phone. Anyway, why, I mean, I think she was asking, why can't it happen? And the city doesn't have any liability because you don't own the property. That's the first thing. If you do take on the property, the recommendation would be that you would get a prospective purchaser agreement, but in there would say, well, here's the city's responsibility, and we don't have an avenue yet for dealing with the asbestos in those two buildings. And so that's why the city, at least for that part, that particular tax lot, is not going to, is not going to get it. That doesn't make any sense. I would discourage you from that, unless we had some funds to say, okay, we're going to be dealing with that, and we don't, haven't identified those yet.
Mr. Mayor, Mary, may I ask a question on the grants? You said that the county has more ability to get a grant than we would as a city?
Yes.
Would you explain that for me, please?
Sure. So, it's just the way that the Brownfield law was written by the federal government, that if you are foreclosed, if you foreclose on a property, so the counties, when they foreclose on properties, are shielded from liability and then are eligible to apply for grants. The federal government, if you're the responsible, if you're the polluter, the saying is, is polluter pays. I.e., that's why we're talking about why is Warehouse paying, because that's the model, right? But on the county, because they did not own it or operate it, only through foreclosure, then they have an easier avenue. So if the city tries to approach and get those grants, it's just challenging because you don't have that shield. Now, some people have been able to do a phase one and try to approach and get a grant, but there's no guarantee of that. So that's why it doesn't make sense for the city to do that, because you still have that property there that hasn't been addressed. So that's why it needs to stay in the county. That one particular tax lot needs to stay in the county until we can identify a source of money to deal with it.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask one more question? So you said prior in the beginning that the county received funding from DEQ for the cleanup, is that correct?
We did, we brought, so DEQ has some small amount of money to assist with the assessment. So EPA brought the bigger money, and we ran out. And so I, because the county foreclosed on it, I was able to get some more money to help out with the groundwater study and some soil samples. So we used that money to help out, so we combined it. And then Business Oregon, as a Brownfield program, they provided a grant loan to this county when the building caught on fire and burnt down. So they helped deal with that asbestos issue because the building got burned down. So there's been three pots of money here that have been brought to the table.
Thank you.
Well, I know, Mary, it's got to be frustrating from your level, trying to get this thing taken care of, but, you know, you're seeing that Warehouse basically says, you know, sue us, you know, and you're like, well, okay, we're like, we don't really, don't have that ability or the money to do that. Is there anybody at the state level that can apply, that has a bigger hammer, that can apply more pressure, in your opinion?
Legally, that would be something that DEQ would have to take on. I mean, if we wanted to go toe-to-toe legally with them. And like you had pointed out, they're a big employer, we're a state where we allow people to do things at their own pace, cleanup-wise, and so there hasn't been a pressure. Now, if the city, you know, approaches DEQ and says, hey, we want you to pursue this, you know, maybe upper management will make that decision, I don't know. They have, so far, have said, no, we're not going to do that, but that is one way, is to force the issue with Warehouse by basically going to court. But that would cost state money, of course, to do that. So, yeah, I don't, I really, I wish I had an easy answer for you to, you know, ideally, it'd be great if Warehouse would do it, because then it would be done, but they won't. And so, is there another grant out there? Yes, the county can apply for a cleanup grant to at least start paying for this. They haven't been wanting to do that. They just, as you know, they just kind of want to like, hey, if we can't sell it, we're just going to make, give it to the city and let the city deal with it. And so I don't know if you have an appetite to not deal with that one lot and look at everything else that you have and start working on that, and we'll just keep trying to find a way to deal with the asbestos in the building. I don't know when that would happen, and if we can get the county to apply for a grant, that's whether it's revolving loan grant from, grant slash loan from Business Oregon, or whether they go for a complete cleanup grant from EPA. I think that's what we're looking at, unless we get a developer that's willing to feel like the property is worth a lot, that they'd be willing to spend that kind of money and develop the property.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask another question? I'm not sure who to direct this question to, but if, is the county actually interested in parceling out? I mean, if they said, take the property, did they mean we can take just part of the properties?
If I may, I don't know that I have a direct answer to that. When the, at the meeting where the county rejected the four proposals, one of the things that they mentioned was the possibility, the idea of parcelizing out the property- that they mentioned was the possibility, the idea of parcelizing out the property based on what they already had an NFA for, a conditional NFA for. And so, if you bring up that map, the, the parcels one, two, and three are the areas that basically there's a, they have all, everything done, and it's, it's, it's all known. And so those are areas that could be, I suppose, parceled off to a developer that, and they would, they're, they're completely buildable and developable, with the exception of, you know, access to them is a, is a problem, obviously. And so that leads me to think that the county would probably be open to selling off parts of it, but exactly how much and to what degree and where the lines would be, that's unknown.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, one of the things that concerned me about the county wanting to do that in, in certain parcel, particles of it, is that they have an idea of what they want to build, and we have a different route that we want to go. And so that would be a concern for me. And when I went over and talked to them, I, I thought that, my, my opinion, I wasn't talking to the council, and I know you guys know that because I told them that, is that I, I think that we should have a bigger say in what we want in that community property. And so that, that was, that was my biggest concern when I went over there and talked to them. And I don't know if they'd be willing to section that part off and, and just leave it sat there for a while. I don't know. I mean, would it be good for the city to have that property? Yeah, I think it would be. But the consequences of taking it is just like when we talked about this 10 years ago. We're in the same place, you know, and, and, and obviously, Mary and those folks have done an amazing job getting what they could get done, but it's pretty dangerous for us to take on a place that's going to maybe cost, she says 500, but that's probably, obviously, it's not going to be all of it. But if anybody's been down there, the timbers in those buildings is absolutely amazing how big they are. But anyway, that's just my concern, and I think that we need to have more say in my opinion in what, what goes on down in the, in the property, so.
I agree with Counselor Trask, but my biggest concern is, you know, this has been going on for some of the years. How many more years is this going to go on? Five, 10, 15, 20, 30 years? I mean, there's a limit of how much can we just keep, keep pushing this can down the road? That's kind of my concern. I probably, I know that one county commissioner made a statement that he was hoping of the four proposals, that I think that there was more clarity, and one of the proposals would have more, taken on more of the liability, you know, on their end, but all four of those proposals were just like, like Blair said, they're not going to take it on unless they have some guarantee, protection for them, which makes common sense. So back to square one.
Well, I would say we're not quite back. I mean, other than that one parcel, we've made a lot of progress, and we know what's out there. So that's all good. We just got to figure out, where we here, of, of how to get that asbestos dealt with. Whether the timbers can be taken down and sold, I, I don't know. You know, it's, it's in the roofing material, and so, you know, basically, the building's got to come down, and they've got to abate it as they take it down. So, and that's just for the abatement, it's not for the demolition of the building. So it is more than $500,000, half a million. I would say probably a quarter, three quarters of a million is probably what we're looking at.
Well, we had one county commissioner said, well, he would donate the land if somebody would come in and just take care of down properly, you know, abate, you know, asbestos. But when you look at the property, I don't know if the property is worth the three quarters of a million dollars. That's, you know, that's one concern.
Another positive thing is, is that EPA let go of the lien that they had, if you will, on, because they did two time-critical removals, and we had two other, three other asbestos releases out there, so that's good. That, at least that piece, that, that other lien has been removed, so we don't have to worry about that. That's why I think, you know, convincing the county to go for a cleanup plan or go after the revolving loan fund to deal with it is, is one option. But again, they haven't been willing to do that because they're tired and they're just ready to have somebody else take it over.
Any other questions? Thanks, Mary, we appreciate everything you do, we really do.
You're welcome. And if you guys want to write a letter to my director and say, hey, we really want you to get Warehouser, you know, back at the table and see if they can, because, because we're, we're tired, we're stuck in a log jam, feel free to do that, that is perfectly-
Was that a hint?
You know, it's, 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 if you, I mean, I, I heard you, so.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question. Mary, could the legislature take a stand on this at all, or is that something that's out of their?
No, legislators can, can, you know, they can, they can direct money towards it if they so choose. So yes, I would talk to your state rep and your state senator and let them know also that this is a very, this is a key project for you, and there's a log jam, and we need three quarters of a million dollars to deal with it, can you help us out? Definitely, I would definitely be talking to them.
But they would not probably be willing to do the lawsuit against Warehouser or put pressure on Warehouser to do that. I, I guess I would assume that, which I hate to do, but.
I, I don't, you know, again, I don't have, you know, we haven't had those conversations with-
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mary, thank you so much for all of your time and effort. I'd just like to share with the council and anybody in the public that's listening how great you have been in answering questions and helping walk us through not only this process, but the process a couple of years ago where the city acquired the old Knife River property, which is just north of that, and you've been an immense help to us, so we really appreciate that, as well as the help you give us with our wastewater treatment plant that we're working on. So thank you very much for all of that.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mary. Once again, thank you on behalf of the city.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Okay, any further?
I, I know if council wants to marinate on this information for a little bit, we can now put it back on a future agenda and make some decisions as to a strategy moving forward, I guess, is what I would, is what I would recommend.
Mr. Mayor, it would really be nice if we could meet with all three of the commissioners and talk about this because-
I was thinking the same thing. I think that step one is have a conversation with the county commissioners.
Okay. And have some sort of an idea what, where they're at. I don't know. Anyway, I, I just think that's a really good idea.
Mr. Mayor, I think not only to know where they are at, but they need to know where we are.
Yeah. I can certainly reach out to the county's administrator, Darren Lane, and ask to, to schedule a meeting, certainly.
I think that'd be the first step in the right direction.
Okay, we can do that.
And go from there. Nothing further, we will go ahead and adjourn this work session at 6:15.